Will you unmute us at some point?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very excited to go.
Please.
I'll go along.
There's a mic.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Um, looks like I know everybody in the audience, but for the record, I'm Audrey Allen. And on behalf of all of the commissioners, I welcome you to today's planning commission meeting. It is January fourteenth and it is nine AM. Um, I must read some stuff before we get going. Um, planning commissions are open to the public. The members of the public may attend in person and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Um, as far as public comment goes, Lyon County allows alternatives for it. If you're attending um via virtual Zoom, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. And this can occur by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to. Is, should this be county clerks or county clerk? Because it says county clerks at lioncounty.org.
I believe it should be clerks.
Okay. So, um, the day prior to the posted meeting date, to be sure, type public comment in the subject. So written public comment may also be mailed to the Lyon County meeting development office at twenty seven South Main Street, Yerington, Nevada, eight nine four four seven. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if they're to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment on the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the planning commission within twenty four hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at this office, the Greg Honeywell uh Lyon County Commission Chambers. These chambers, twenty seven South Main Street, Yerington, Nevada. And action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted and no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. And to avoid meeting disruptions, please place all your electronic um devices. Especially cell phones and in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. And like I said before, um restrictions on public comments are really um. We are asking them to be reasonable and may restrict the time, place and manner of the comments, but not restrict comments based on viewpoint. And as far as roll call goes, we have a couple of new members and I'd like to welcome one as I go along. Um, so I'll start with the new ones. Wendy Lewis, welcome.
Thank you.
And Andrew Merrick, welcome.
Thank you.
And um Ralph Uhl.
Here.
Laura DeSalle.
Here.
Mark Jones.
Here.
Shannon Sarasola. We have a quorum. Uh, Loretta, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands the nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You guys even have a future.
Okay, so it is time for public comment. Um, but like I said earlier, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission uh may speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. All speakers are asked to state their name for the record and those in chambers may approach the podium and um are asked to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per topic or per person. The commission reserves the right to reduce this time limit, the three minutes, as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future planning commission meeting. Planning mission will not restrict comments, like I said before, based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The chair may reopen public participation uh at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item until uh it's specifically been included as an agenda item with on which action may be taken. So, is there any public comment?
I just wanted to make some comments.
Okay.
Lisa Fogel, for the record, deputy district attorney. There seemed like there was a little bit of confusion in the written materials that as to whether or not the email or public comment should be sent to county clerk or county clerks. The plural is the correct um statement of that, so it's county clerks, just as it is written in in the materials.
Okay. Okay, so it is county clerks. In the past, it's been clerk.
Pardon me?
In the past, I believe it's been clerk.
I don't believe so. I think the email is always sent to when you pull it up on your on your.
Okay, well, thank you for that information.
Okay, thank you.
It is appropriate. So has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Um. Is there any public comment on the agenda? Okay, if it's acceptable, I'll hear a motion on it.
I don't we accept the agenda as a as adopted and given to a second.
Okay, we have motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, that one. Passes. Let's go on to item five. Um, it's oh, we're to the election of officers. Um, and during this period, we'll be um looking for nominations for the chair, vice chair, and secretary. And I'd like to start by nominating Mel Fearing as chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I'd like to know.
Discussion. Is there a second? Are there any other nominations? We'll vote on Ralph. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? I would like at this time to kind of do pomp and circumstance. We'll take a five minute break and we'll change seats.
Five minutes?
Okay. It's a long wait. That's nine oh eight. Let's be back at nine thirteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Like to call the planning commission meeting back to order, and first thing I'd like to do is thank all my fellow commissioners for their support. I appreciate that very much. And that being said, I guess we're still carrying on with item five A, election of officers, and the next one up is the vice chair. And um I'd heard from our current chair or ex-chair that she wanted to run for vice chair, so I'm gonna go ahead and nominate Audrey. But I'll accept other nominations as well from the floor.
Mr. Jones. I would like to nominate Shannon, Sarah, whatever. Sarah, so so as a vice chair. I and I and the reason I I do that is I think that the vice chair is a learning position to move up to the next step. Uh, and so it's it's good to have somebody uh learning from this position. That's just the way I kind of like it, but. So that's why I nominated you.
Okay, I didn't ask for seconds for Audrey's nomination yet. Is there any any second for her? A second. Okay. So we'll move on to a vote for Audrey since she was nominated first for the position of vice chair. All in favor, say aye, please. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Because we want to go over Shannon.
No, no, we're both each one at a time.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So.
Position, you were so voting.
Yeah.
So, yeah, okay.
Those opposed, raise your hand.
Four opposed.
Four opposed, you can. And now we'll take a vote on Shannon. Pardon you.
Andrew.
You didn't take long. Andrew Haskin, Lion County manager. Uh, two things. One, um, actually, you didn't take public comment before the last vote, so you should probably do that.
Okay.
Um, and then the second thing is, uh, you haven't had a second yet on uh. Shannon's on. Oh, did you? I think, yeah, I'm sorry. We couldn't hear in the back, so.
Yeah, she's being quiet.
Just wanna make sure we're all two.
You're right on the first one.
Okay, we'll we'll revert to taking public comment on the first nomination for vice chair, Audrey Allen. Is there any? Seeing none or online. Now, and we do have a motion and a second for Shannon, so a solar to be vice chair, so we can take a vote on that. All in favor?
Okay.
Yeah, let's do it. Raising hands, okay.
So if I already voted on the other one, I can't vote on this one?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
They should be able to vote along.
I don't know why you I don't know why you couldn't.
Definitely.
Andrew Haskin, Lion County manager. So this is a separate motion, so you.
Oh, I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we get a count?
I'll change my mind and say aye.
So I'm gonna put unanimous.
May I just say something before you move on?
Sure.
I would just like to thank you all um for your support. I don't know how many times it's served this chair, but I've enjoyed doing it. And um it was a learning process and um I love serving the county, so it was a good it was a good fit.
Thank you very much for your service.
Sir Chair there. I would like to uh thank Audrey for her service to this, you know, uh, we don't. The one great thing about this board, we don't all have to agree. We just have to agree to get along and respect each other's comments. And I I think we've gotten there as a as a group. And so I I really look forward to seeing the new year roll, so.
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you can appreciate you a lot.
Thanks.
I've learned a lot sitting next to you myself.
I thought you learned a lot sitting next to me.
We're moving down.
So we move the chairs again?
Yeah. So I don't think we need to.
Public comment?
Well. Is. I guess we didn't do public comment on Shannon.
I don't know. We have to see public comment.
Yes. Okay. Any public comment? Seeing that online or in the chambers, we'll proceed. And as far as moving chairs for vice chair, normally they sit to the right or the left of the chair, but we could do that at another time. Okay. So our third uh officer position is secretary. And I'll go ahead and accept nominations for that position.
Mr. Sarasola, I'll nominate the red itself.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. Can we get some public comment from in the chamber or online? Seeing none, I'll proceed with the vote. All in favor of Laura DeSalle for secretary?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. So that motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is uh for possible action, the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Really public comment on that? Not anymore. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Sarasola, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the December tenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
All second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any commissioner discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Today. At the end, so I can.
That's right. So that's approved. Um, we have two extensions, actually. So approved five zero two. Okay. Moving on, item number seven, advisory uh advisory board reports, are there any? Seeing none? We'll move on to public hearing items. All right, we have three of those. So the first one is AA, for possible action to approve the request from Tracked Capital Management LP for a continuance to the February eleventh, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting for a development agreement for the so. Springs Technology Park on approximately four hundred and sixty acres on six parcels that total approximately a thousand seventy acres. APM zero one five dash zero nine one dash zero eight. Zero one five dash one 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 dash zero one, oh two, oh four, and oh five, and oh six. P O Z two oh two four dash zero five zero. There's staff reports.
Other thought, uh, good morning, planning commissioners. Congratulations to our new officers. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Uh. The applicant has requested a continuance, and that's all that's included in the packet today. Uh, staff and the district attorney are still working with the applicants on the development agreement uh that will be associated with the the tract project that the planning commission uh heard three items for back uh in November twelfth, twenty twenty four planning commission meeting. Uh, that was specific plan and master plan amendment, zoning map amendment. Uh, this body did recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners, but now the development agreement uh is a little bit behind in again being worked through uh the with the details. So the applicants endeavoring to bring forward the development agreement uh to the February eleven, twenty twenty five planning commission meeting. Uh, and then at that point, bring all of their items to the Board of Commissioners uh in March of twenty twenty five so that every item has a planning commission recommendation attached to it. So you you'll see the continuance request in the packet is quite short. Um, and that was uh sort of the intent here is to not have any substantive material to view because we're simply uh recommending, staff recommending approval uh of your granting of the continuance.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none here or online, are there any commissioner comments? Okay, that's them. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to uh approve the continuance request for item eight A.
All second then.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead for the vote. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, this passes.
Again.
So any opposed? Extinctions. Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's go on to item eight B. For possible action to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the requested from Dayton Partner. Number one LLC for a plant development PUD amendment to the amendment existing the lakes of Dayton Valley PUD handbook. The area included within the PUD is generally located north and south of Dayton Valley Road and north and east of Palmer Drive in Dayton for nine parcels totaling approximately seven hundred eleven point five acres. APM zero one six dash three five one dash sixteen dash seventeen dash eighteen, zero one six dash three one six dash six oh, zero one six three dash three six one dash six three, dash six five, dash six six, dash six eight, and dash seven one. P O Z twenty twenty four dash oh seven seven. Staff report.
Good morning, Gavin Anderson, Lion County Community of All the Director. Um, similar to item eight A, um, eight D is also requested continuance. That is due to uh our going uh review and not being uh, you know, at a point in time where it would be that decided would be be able to be brought forward to the commission for an actual hearing. Uh, with that being said, uh, the request for continuance was included in the agenda, and that's all as provided at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff or commissioner Collins?
I I just have a question. I don't I don't, looking at my agenda here, it doesn't say, I don't see where it says requesting. Continuance.
So we did receive the request after the um agenda was published, so we'll be looking for the commission to uh make requests for continuance based on uh the applications for applicant requests.
And that would be the same as HC.
Correct, sir.
Okay.
So when we make a motion, we need to point out that it's a request for continuing since.
Correct, for the February eleventh.
Okay. And, okay, any uh comments from public? Online, won't see any. Um, I'll entertain a motion on this one. I do.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Sarasola, I'll make a motion to move. Item eight B to the February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting upon the applicant's request.
All second.
Okay, we'll motion a second. Any further comment?
Andrew.
Okay.
Okay, we just. All right, thanks.
You need to move up for us.
All right. All right, if I'm motion a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? None. It passes unanimously. And the third one is item eight C for possible action to forward a recommendation to the planning to excuse me, to the Board of County Commissioners for the request for Dayton Partner, Dayton Partner number one LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend the zone, zoning map designations for the title ten districts of N R dash one, single family, non-rural residential district and T dash C tourist commercial district to the title fifteen district of P U D planned unit development. General located north and south, excuse me, of Dayton Valley Road and north and east of Palmer Drive in Dayton for nine parcels totaling approximately seven hundred eleven point five acres A P N zero one six dash three five one dash one six dash one seven dash one eight. Zero one six dash three six one dash six oh, zero one six dash three six one dash six three, six five, six six, six eight and seven one and P O Z twenty twenty four dash forty. Any other public comment online or here? Any other commissioner comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to, I'll move to uh approve our request, the approval continues to the uh Board of County Commissioners on item eight C.
Sorry, that was.
Did, did we get that from um staff? The staff report?
Yep, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Uh so item eight C is similar to eight B. Those items um were run concurrently, um so the request is for the same uh continues to the February eleventh twenty twenty five.
Okay, I assumed that would happen, okay. So let's go back to calling for the vote.
So the, the motion would need to reflect um.
Commissioner Sarisawa, I'm gonna make a clarification on the motion. We're going to, um I make a motion to move item eight C to the February eleventh twenty twenty five planning commission meeting upon applicant's request.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the abandoned moment. Motion, excuse me. Um let's call for a vote, please.
Aye.
Aye, all favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. All right, let's move on to item nine from community development director. For discussion and presentation on the community, community development director comments, training and updates, planning commission training.
Hey, good morning. What, Gavin Anderson, Lake County Development Director. So I just want to first congratulate our our reappointed uh commission members as well as our newly appointed commission members um of the T A P G sets.
I have this. I have, thank you, bro, I'm having. I have that too.
We're gonna start this uh wonderful new year off with a presentation on just the general review of the planning process and procedures. So this presentation will cover several key aspects of the planning and development process. First, we'll view master plan and land use designations and discuss how these guide future growth and development line county. Uh we'll also explore zoning, diving into how it supports implementation of the master plan and helps define what can and cannot be developed in specific areas. Next, we'll go over findings which are critical in the decision-making process, ensuring that each project meets the necessary standards and aligns with county goals. The public process will also be highlighted, emphasizing how findings are used during the public input and deliberations to ensure transparency and community engagement. From there, we'll discuss voting on action items, outlining how decisions are formally made and approved, and finally, we'll touch on development requirements, providing an overview of what developers need to meet for the projects to move towards success for you. So starting off with master plan and land use designations, so the distinction between master plan and zoning is essential to understanding how we guide development like county. Master plans are advisory in nature. They operate at a policy level, providing a long-term vision for the community. These plans help shape our decision-making by outlining priorities and serving as a framework to guide future development decisions. In contrast, zoning is a regulatory in nature. It functions to implement the master plan's vision in a more detailed and enforceable way. Zoning specifies permitted uses, allowed densities, and development standards, ensuring that growth aligns with the community's broader goals. Together, master plans and zoning create a balanced approach to planning, combining vision with enforceable rules to achieve cohesive development. The picture to the right is what you normally see in the staff reports and in presentations. It's just a little snippet of the uh Lion County uh master plan.
Gavin?
Yes, question.
Hmm, I just wanted to know. I appreciate your presentation, and I've always appreciated Andrews as well, when he's done it in the past. Um, how, did you want us, if we have questions?
No, actually, if you have questions or comments, feel free to stop. Yeah, this.
Alright.
We have plenty slides, so it might be a little lengthy, so feel free to chime in. That way you don't have to hold those questions.
Okay, thanks. I, I just wanted to uh comment like on the master plan.
Yes.
For clarification, I, you say they're long-term, but generally the, it's a ten-year process, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, they're updated to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Community.
Yes, yes, community input, so that's very important to get all the stakeholders involved.
Okay, thank you.
That process.
Thank you.
Yes, so how is it usually public notified of the coming up of a master plan to input?
So the, the, the noticing um can take various forms, you know, whether it's, you know, meter releases. Um, you know, bringing it to the board meetings, bringing it to the planning missions, trying to get it involved. So it's a little different than planning items in general. Because it's not, we're not looking at uh project, and then we look at the vicinity, right? So everyone gets a notice, so really it's just public trying to push as much public involvement as we can. Uh so it's gonna be brought up in the board meeting, brought up with the bank mission, uh media releases, it's gonna be on the website. Um there'll be uh stakeholder meetings at each um kind of ward or town, right? Um to get all those involvement, community involvement moving forward in the process.
That's generally through the advisory boards, right?
Correct, yeah, the advisory boards too. Yeah, so just trying to take take as much of the, the boards as we can and much as uh kind of those public public cabinets that we can to get this, get the, get it out for the master.
So that's kind of the picture at the time of what the community would like to see.
Correct.
At that point in time.
For ten years.
Yeah, well, it is, but it's, it's their projection for ten years. But we have major changes in the area within that time. Being that this is advisory. Those can be brought forward.
And that's why we have master plan amendments. So we're not strictly held to the master plan in general. Obviously, it's a living document, and that's why we have the master plan amendment process for applicants. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving forward for master plan landings designations, so it's important to understand that master plan designations and zoning districts are not the same. Like we had mentioned previously, some master plan designations provide a framework for future development in Lion County. They represent the community's vision for what area should look like in the future, but they do not replace zoning. Well, that's a very important um um very important to make that designation. So these designations are not always consistent with existing zoning development or current uses. Instead, they reflect a long-term perspective that considers input from the community as well as guidance from elected and appointed officials. It's also critical to note that master plan designations do not remove or change property owner entitlements. So that's very important to remember moving forward. So they serve as a guide for future growth and development, ensuring decisions align with the broader community vision without altering existing rights. Any questions after that? I'll just. One more. So moving forward zoning, so zoning is a set of laws and regulations that governs how property can and cannot be used in specific geographic areas. It plays a critical role in determining what property owners have the rights to do with their property, ensuring that land use aligns with community goals and development standards. Zoning regulations provide clarity and structure, creating a framework that balances private property rights with the broader needs of the community. And in the case of an inconsistency between the master plan and zoning, the zoning district governs uses and entitlements. So that's also important to know moving forward.
You have, you have agriculture on there zoning, I see the three, but well. We have agriculture out there. What area, what color is agriculture on your map there?
I believe it's green.
Just that little tiny piece of green?
But this, it's, this, this map is not, doesn't have any agriculture on it, I believe.
Oh, let me get some clerk. Okay, that's a bigger.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a snippet, it's just a general.
It's just a snippet.
Yeah. So moving forward zoning, so the county cannot change zoning on a property without the property owner's permission. Doing so would violate the takings clause of the fifth and fourteenth amendments, which protect property owners' rights. So if the property owner wishes to change the zoning on their property, the proposed zoning must be compatible with the master plan. It's one of the findings that we looked for in those applications and meet all legal findings. So this ensures the zoning changes align with the community's long-term vision while respecting individual property rights. So it's very, very important to note that, again, zoning on a prop- we cannot change zoning on a property without the property owner's permission, and that's why we receive these applications, and that's how, why we process these applications. Moving forward with the public process, so this, if you can read this, it's, it's a little small, but um it kind of walks you through the public process from both getting an application to the planning commission and then forwarding that recommendation to the board of county commissioners. So the bu- the public process for development applications follows a structured sequence to ensure transparency and thorough review. So step one, we'll just walk you through kind of a brief summary. So it begins with applicant, applicants middle for a public hearing item or an application. Next, we uh three day, it gets a three-day completeness review, um that's conducted to confirm all required materials are provided. Um moving forward, the application is then distributed for review to the relevant departments and agencies. Um after that, uh once those reviews are complete, staff assembles a staff report uh providing analy- analysis and recommendations, and those staff reports are brought forward to the, the bank mission as well as the board of county commissioners. Uh public notices are issued to inform the community and stakeholders about the, the up, the upcoming uh hearing items. After that, the application is presented to the bank mission for a recommendation of the board of county commissioners or a decision depending on the case. Appeals on the plan commission items must be filed within ten days. So that's, that's important to know moving forward too as well, so. Um next, the, the board of county commissioners then reviews and takes action on that application once they receive the recommendation from the county commission.
Excuse me, is there a question?
No, I just had my binder here with this in there, so I can take it out. I know my binders, I was discouraged when my binder was.
Okay, thank you.
We don't know. I don't either. That's what I asked.
All right.
And then uh so if there is an appeal of the board of county commissioners' decision, um that also must be filed within twenty-five days. And then finally, the final action or determination is issued that um concludes the process. So this process is just there to ensure those, those applications are thoroughly reviewed and that there's a clear and concise process to move forward with. Was there any questions on the kind of that process? I know.
Just a comment. I know during this period, staff does an immense amount of work looking up findings and working with the applicant on getting it together before it comes to us. We don't get to see how the sausage is made, actually.
Absolutely.
Right.
And we'll talk a little bit more about more about that um as we continue the presentation.
I also have a comment. I think this would be useful for advisory boards as well. We, at the last advisory board for Dayton, um an item came up and they were unable to get a presentation, and so they decided to continue it to their next meeting. And I had to kind of advise them afterwards that there was a time rolling along here, and by the time their next meeting rolls along, we will have seen it. The board of county commissioners will have seen it, and it will be a moot point if they want to talk about it again, so.
Absolutely. Working with the advisory boards um and just based on their, their meeting schedule, it does make it hard to get, you know, the appropriate information.
Exactly.
At a time of the matter. But we do the best we can.
Thank you.
Um so next, we're gonna talk a little bit about um voting on an action, action item. So when voting on an action item, there are three main options. So there's a, a yes to approve, so vote to approve the item either as it was presented or as modified in the motion. So if approving, one may choose to provide a reason for the vote, either during the decision of the, discussion of the, I'm sorry, or after the motion, but before the vote. Um there's also, you can deny or no uh vote. Um that is a vote to disprove the item. Um there needs to be a reason for denial, uh must be offered for the record. Um particularly when staff has recommended approval. Uh the reason should be based on the findings, so that's very important. Uh a misrepresentation by the applicant or staff or another um about another valid rational rationale, not simply a personal preference. So you can't say, I don't like it, we need a valid reason uh for the denial. Uh you can also abstain, so there, there is an option to not vote on the item due to a real or perceived conflict of interest or ineligibility to vote. So examples include a family or business connection to the matter or approving minutes for a meeting one did not attend. Um so similar to this morning, um when we approved the minutes from the last meeting, uh we had two abstentions because obviously this is commissioner's address. Uh it's important to note that an abstention cannot be used to avoid a contentious issue or vote. So you can't abstain just because you don't want your vote on the record or. Other than what's noted for, yes.
Again, to go in this packet, we, we didn't have examples for new members, but staff does give um all of the reasons, uh all the findings. For both, for uh an approved vote, a denied vote, or, or to continue it.
Correct, usually that's in the staff report as well as in the.
Yes, we don't have to take it upon ourselves to go and look up these findings. Staff will have done that for us in the packet.
And on the no vote, it's my understanding, um correcting if I'm wrong, but if we were to vote no or deny a project where they meet all the qualifications and the N R Ss, that could be considered an illegal taking of property rights?
Potentially. It's, I mean, it's obviously depend on the situation. Like I said, if you're gonna vote no, we need a reason why, and it, you know, it's gotta be based on the findings, instead of within the PowerPoint, within the staff report. Um just to make it system with, you know, like our code. Uh the planning process in general.
Okay, thank you.
Uh so findings for approvals, so findings are, are a set list of required conditions that must be met for a project to receive approval. So these conditions are specific to the type of entitlement being sought and are commonly referred to as legal findings. When making decisions, whether to recommend approval or denial of a project, the primary consideration is whether the project meets the findings for the specific app, application type. Both staff and bank mission rely on these findings to guide their decisions. If the project meets the findings, it can be supported, often with mitigation measures where necessary. If the project does not meet the findings, this serves as the basis for a recommendation of denial. Using findings ensures that decisions are consistent, sensible, and based on a clear and objective criteria. Little bit more about findings for approval, so we, we're gonna take a look at an example. So the findings for a zoning map amendment or zone change. So when approving a zoning text or map amendment, both the plank mission and the board of county commissioners must make the following findings, supported by a, a statement of evidence, facts, and conclusions. So number one, consistency with the master plan. So the proposed amendment must align with policies outlined in the adopted master plan and the underlying land use destinations in the land use plan. Number two, adequate public facilities. So the proposed amendment must con- not conflict with the adequate public facilities policies outlined in the applicable regulations. And then number three, compatibility with adjacent uses. The proposed amendment must be compatible with actual or master plan adjacent uses. So these findings ensure that any zoning changes are thoughtful, deliberate, and aligned with both the community's visions and practical development considerations. Would then, does anyone want me to walk a little further into that example?
I just wanted to clarify something for the new members I mentioned earlier, because you had approval um. And what was that second one?
No.
No, and then, and then you had.
Abstention.
I mentioned continuance. We can't recommend a continuance, only the owner or the project applicant can ask for a continuance, but we can recommend that they consider, that they consider getting more information and bringing it back, right?
I believe.
It's always one of the options provided by staff.
Yes, yeah, we can't make that recommendation though.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So you can ask for a continuance, but the owner has to agree with it, uh because of the timelines and then our, so, so if the owner doesn't agree, then um then we can't move forward with the continuance.
But if we feel we haven't got enough information to make a reasonable decision, we can always seek out further information, correct, clarification. Would that be directly with you then, since we can't ask for continuance?
Sure, um I mean, yeah, you can always ask for for additional information from either the applicant or from staff, but um.
Sure, um I mean, yeah, you can always ask for, for additional information from either the applicant or from staff, but um but. Like I said, because of the timelines and NRS, um it'd be different, you can't ask for it to be moved to the, the next meeting unless that.
Yeah, did I answer your question? Yeah, no, that's fine. Uh I just have one more then. If, if we find that, because we get our packages early, so we do go in and look at your findings. And, and can research your findings ourselves to feel if we can, if we agree. But if we didn't agree, would it be who, us to bring that to you before our meetings?
I, I would say.
Yeah, I don't want to throw you out of the bus.
I would say, Rick, for, for more Monday afternoon questions, yeah.
Because of open meeting loss, I mean, staff has to be careful, right? So they can answer your questions, but um not a whole lot of discussion can, can happen outside of the meeting, so. If you have a, need some clarification on a point, I mean, you can certainly uh call staff or, or somebody who will. Something's not clear at the time, but.
How many asked that this last meeting was quite a bit of confusion, kind of both.
And speaking of that, when um an applicant comes up and gives additional information or makes a presentation on their application. We, uh we can get into interaction with them, but if the public has comment on it, we can't get into that back and forth with the public commenter, is that correct?
Right, that is right.
I'm glad for that clarification on the continuance, because when we get our packet, it does contain tentative motions for approval, denial, and continuance. So that helps us know when to use in, any of those.
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, the, the planning commission can absolutely ask for it, uh but it, it's voluntary on the, on the applicant's part.
Thank you.
So was there any more uh questions, comments regarding kind of the zoning map amendment example that I went through? No, alright. Next, we'll look at an example of a tentative subdivision map. So this, this slide shows an example of a tentative subdivision map, which outlines the proposed layout and existing conditions of the area. So the planning commission reviews this map and makes its own conditions, which the board of county commissioners can further modify before granting approval. Any conditions placed on the map must be in line with the development standards and cannot be arbitrary or unjustified. If the zoning aligns with the proposal, the necessary findings are met and development standards are achieved through the added conditions. It is challenging for the board to reject the map. It is also important to note that the condition should not be resulting in a taking of the property rights, meaning that they must respect the property owner's rights and adhere to established standards. Was any questions on that example? So um moving forward, so again, I'm going with the tentative subdivision map, the. To officially divide a larger parcel into smaller lots, a final subdivision map must be reported. In some cases, a master plan amendment or zoning amendment may be required before moving forward. Once the tentative subdivision map is approved, the developer may begin site improvements, um such as grading utilities, roads, and sidewalks prior to the final maps for recreation. Provided that the pre-construction permits and inspections are obtained. If the improvements are completed before the final map is recorded. Um only a maintenance bond is required. If they're not completed, a performance bond must be posted instead. Once all requirements are met and improvements are in place, the final subdivision map is officially recorded. And that improvement or performance bond is a hundred and fifty percent of the engineer's estimate. So basically, the engineers give us an estimate for all the work um for the projects and then that bond is a hundred and fifty percent of that. So we get this question a lot. So why does it seem like staff always recommends approval? Uh so staff typically recommends denial in situations where projects do not meet necessary standards, which is why they often do not reach the public hearing process. Developers and companies are unlikely to submit a formal application if they anticipate that staff will recommend denial at the hearing. By the time a project reaches the community advisory board, planning commission, and board of county commissioners, staff has thoroughly reviewed it multiple times. This ensures and the project aligns with the required findings and development standards and that with any conditions, it, it can be recommend, recommended for approval. So basically, we don't. We don't, we try to nip those projects in the bud. If there's any sort of complications or anything like that, we try to have those conversations before we get it, um get an app for modification. We have a pre-application meeting, we have roundtable meetings, or we can meet with those applicants, prospective applicants. Uh for their projects and we can get, uh discuss any issues and then at that point, it's, it's their choice to move forward with that application.
So this commission can, I was not reading the last, we can request uh conditions we put on our vote that goes up to the board of county commissioners.
Yeah, so it's conditions, so COPs, tentative maps, anything that's a, a condition-based application. Um obviously, the planning commission can recommend conditions for those applications to move forward to the board of county commissioners.
Commissioner, sir, so I have a comment, just because of like last month when we were talking about the one project, we were trying to send it to the commission. With some additional. Um items for them, you know, including the irrigation district. We can, we can put that and ask the commissioners to include that. So we're giving them some additional information, so we're not to, um decline, uh denying it at this level. But we are understanding that there are some concerns and that we would like the commissioners to look at those concerns and maybe add these extra things.
I'm glad you brought up this point.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because, you know, it can really be a time waster just to bring projects before us that look like they're not going to go anywhere.
Well, it's, it's not really a time waste, or we just like to have those discussions on the front end, prior to those applications being submitted and accepted.
Well, when you look at the amount of time it takes for a board to get together to review them, I mean, you, you review them at home, you get together, you review them, and they're not prepared. You know, so we appreciate staff going through all of it and bringing forward to us, you know, projects that are ready to go.
Absolutely, and that's our goal. And that's why, like I said, most of, most of those items brought forward are a recommendation for approval, because we've gone through the process, we've gone through the review. They meet all the findings, um so that's why it's a recommendation for approval.
Are you required to bring the ones that you don't feel that you've denied before?
Correct, yeah, no, I know, obviously, if we've had those discussions with the applicant and, you know, the basis for our decision is going to be a recommendation now. It's their decision or it's or not to put forth the application. Obviously, the planning commission, you guys have your vote, the board of county commissioners has their vote, like uh that's part of, that's the beautiful. That's the beautiful part about public hearing processes and you can take whatever shape for it or else.
Right, and if we can somehow come around, find a way to approve a project by conditioning it rather than denying it, that's a positive step forward.
Absolutely. So kind of touching, touching the same basis um towards the, the previous slides. So staff may recommend denial if they are unable to mitigate the project's impacts. Through conditions, common conditions of approval typically require road, road pavement, even acquisition, or dedication of water rights to meet the necessary findings. Another reason for denial is, is that staff is aware of a nearby pending project that hasn't yet been built. But would conflict with the proposal. For example, every industrial zone, zone change for an intensive project may not be suitable next to a planned strip mall or residential development. Staff may also recommend then, recommend denial if essential information is missing, such as traffic impact analysis or an updated traffic memo. Finally, if the proposal is inconsistent with the master plan and cannot meet the required findings, staff may recommend denial. So again, touching, touching on a couple key factors with, you know. How staff can recommend denial based on, you know, not meeting findings or not having the appropriate documents within the application movement. Um next, we're going to go through a, kind of an example for a conditional use permit. So many applicant, applicants begin by requesting a roundtable meeting, like I said before. Where staff from various departments and entities such as planning, roads, fire, and sometimes building review preliminary plans and provide feedback. After making necessary adjustments, the applicant then applies for a conditional use permit. Those staff will distribute the application for comments and work closely with the applicant to ensure the project is ready for its conditional approval. The conditions of approval typically cover items such as required roadway improvements, completion of specific studies, granting amisms, and securing water rights. It's important to note that the reports and actions related to these conditions, such as plans, surveys, easements, and water rights are not usually submitted by the applicant before receiving conditional approval. As these can be costly to prepare. Is there any questions on kind of example of a conditional use permit? I do want to know, those roundtables that um the community department utilizes are, you know, pretty important to our process. Because like I said, we can have those conversations on the front end with those applicants regarding their projects, um to discuss any issues regarding potential complications with that project moving forward. And we can either um find quick resolutions, or, you know, maybe financially it makes it um not feasible for that project. So um again, leaning more towards, you know, why staff may seem like we're always coming for the recommendation of approval. Next, we're going to talk about water and water rights. So water and water rights are regulated, regulated by the Nevada Division of Water Resources based on the availability of water within the hydrographic basin. There are different types of water rights, including groundwater and surface water rights. Water rights are considered a property right, much like zoning, and cannot be arbitrarily taken away by the county. Even if my county regulates water rights, they cannot revoke them. For every new lot created, water rights must be permanently dedicated or surrendered to their appropriate authority. This could either be the Division of Water Resources for wells or the utility department, um like dating utilities for county water. Is there any questions or, yes?
What's, I, you know, we keep hearing two, two point two, what is the required amount of acreage?
Two acreage.
Just two acreage.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
This is an important distinction, because I keep hearing from the public, you know, whenever a new development is proposed, well, we don't have the water for that. And what are we going to do about it? How can we, you know, and it's, this is very clear, it's not up to us. It's up to the Division of Water Resources.
And the water rights, it's, it's an open market system, right? So it's not, anything, the county plays a role, and if a private developer needs water to facilitate the project, it's. The burden is placed on that applicant to go out and find the water rights and then purchase them, and then dedicate them to the county um for use. Um we'll touch a little bit more on water and sewer utilities. So projects must include adequate water and wastewater plants to serve the development. The developer is responsible for covering the cost of any water and wastewater line extensions. Um another topic we get a lot is septic tanks. So septic tanks are only allowed if the, if the property is not within four hundred feet of an existing sewer line. There is also a requirement for a minimum lot size, so a minimum lot size of one acre is required for, if the lot is served by a well. And then a minimum lot size of half acre of the lot, if the lot is served by community water supply. Uh so we do get a lot of questions as far as septic tanks, obviously, they're um important to uh um establish sewer in line counting. But those are kind of those stipulations for septic, septic tanks and um. We do get a lot of questions on those, but a lot of it is, like I said, acreage requirements, and then uh you meet those stipulations and then dependent on whether you're served by a well or municipal water.
Yeah, I know, I have a question.
Yes.
Wendy Loomis, um I see that it says within four hundred feet of the six inch sewer line, how many feet does the septic have to be away from the well?
Hundred feet.
A hundred?
Yes. Next, we'll touch on uh roads. So developers are responsible for constructing all new roads within a subdivision to meet county standards. So once the roads pass inspection for compliance, the county may accept them for maintenance. If the development impacts offside road, offsite roads and causes their level of service to fall below acceptable standards. The developer is responsible for making necessary offsite road improvements. So all roads, even those intended to remain private, must be built to county standards. Once roads pass final inspections and are accepted for maintenance, the developer must post a ten percent maintenance bond um for one year. This ensures that the pavement curves and other elements withstand weather and time. And this, after this period, the road can then be accepted for dedication. Next, we'll touch on uh storm drainage and development. So the amount of runoff generated on a site uh must remain the same before and after development. So detention or retention basins are used to slow runoff discharges, allowing the managed release of infiltration. Um so discharge across property lines, so surface discharge across or from any developer area must not cross property lines. Except through a natural water course or made a major drainage facility. An approved drainage system within a public storm drainage easement or a permanent surface drainage easement. As with other infrastructure, these drainage improvements are tip, are the responsibility of the developer. So again, we just, the, the overall premise of storm drainage is. Um the water coming into the site cannot, you know, be more coming out of the site, right? So any of that water, um new storm water kind of. Added to by their curvators or rooftops, pavement, um and those kind of things, those have to be retained and within the project with retention or detention basins.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. You know, we cut, we get projects occasionally, you know, that are, that are subject to um runoff. Say they're in a lugeal fan, but there's other development that didn't have those same requirements and were built. So uh that puts staff and the planning commission and the county commission in an awkward situation. Because this project that's before us has to meet all of those drainage requirements. But all of the others that are down there did not have to, but they're subject to the same thing.
So we do have um drainage guidelines, and we just updated them to include kind of what you're talking about, the lugeal fan areas. So now we have those air drainage master plans within the guidelines. Uh we are working through uh finalizing the process, so basically. Uh working with Dow and J four, um we're working on a modeling software. So basically, we can provide applicants within those lugeal fan areas um that are not, that designated flood zone, right? Because that's an easy mapped area. So now we can guide projects, right, providing that modeling information on the front end, um so they can make the, those um best practice decisions. Uh whether it be relocating the structure outside of, you know, that lugeal fan area, or knowing the depth of flow. So I, they have to raise a certain amount of feat about that. So that, that is something that I'm working, we're in the final stages, just kind of working through the um, the modeling at this point.
Good. Thank you.
One more question, please.
Yes, sir.
On this, on the septics. You know, a lot of people have been adding to their property, buying out other farmers and stuff like this, and there's existed septics that do have leach lines that go into the property that they sold. Yeah, uh grandfather.
Leach lines that go into a property that was sold.
Yeah, like I, I just found a, I, I find these crazy septics on my property, it's kind of crazy, but um the one that's, um speaking of right now. The septic lines go into the uh Derry's property, but they bought that property from the guy that owned the house. And so those, it's still there and the lines still go out to his property, is he grandfathered in?
Yeah, well, I'm, I mean, I'm not sure, I would have to treat that on like a, a case-by-case basis and I would need a little more information. Are you saying a leach lines cross property lines?
Yeah.
Essentially.
I think what, what you kind of say is because he subdivided and then the leach line, when he subdivided, the leach line was, was put into the property. So once the property was subdivided, now you've got a leach line that went into an exist, a, a new. You know, property one.
Okay.
What he's asking.
Yeah, so those are individual septic tanks, so they are there to serve, you know, one residence, one property. I would say we look at it, we'd have to go through the building records to see if, you know. If we cut off those, those portions of leach signs that are coming into that new property essentially, you know, because it still served the gravacity of the home. Kind of look more into the design criteria for the septic tank. But I'd have to dive more into that, um to get you a more affirmative answer.
Uh Commissioner, sir, so I have a comment. My gu- my guess would be it, that. If that property came with new, wanted to change their development or new development, they'd have to bring it to code. And if it was identified that it was leaching onto another property, it probably would be corrected at that point in that development process, correct?
Absolutely, I mean, a, a new development is always a good, good point to kind of establish those new criteria, like as well as look at the septic system.
Just to clarify, Wendy Loomis, that septic is not in use. You're talking about the one by the.
Oh, no, it's not in use.
It's not in.
It just stinks and it's a lot of flies. It will be filled in very soon.
Understand, yes.
Sir, I just, I found that it was leaching into somebody's property.
Yeah, I've come to practice today with a, a new septic system, it's yes to stay within the property. Alright, with that being said, that is the last slide as far as kind of a brief overview of the planning process procedures. Is there any last questions, comments, concerns, anything I can answer? Is there any last questions, comments, concerns, anything I can answer?
I have a comment, just a, not a question.
Yes, sir.
So Smith Valley, well, intense Smith Valley, we have, we're zoned largely with agriculture. But then all of a sudden, the water's being sold off to the, uh, conserves. And there's no water for that existing zoning designation anymore, especially like a day lane, south of day lane. Where the, the dairy sold off all their groundwater. So, that won't survive under agriculture. Because nobody can add without water. And so, but all those properties over there are still under the agricultural master plan.
And that's something, I mean, if that ends up, you know, being a, uh, you know, a more extensive. Kind of situation, that's something, you know, when the ten years comes up, we're kind of adopting a new match, and we could definitely look into that.
Some, I'm gonna say, yeah, so if people buying those properties, uh, they won't be able to have agricultural on it.
We do have non-irrigated agriculture as well.
Making a request to amend the master plan.
What is non-irrigated?
I have to look, oh, I don't know. I mean, I'm assuming it's more livestock or, you know.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, I forgot we got animals in there, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
Just that this is, you know, I've been attending a few days, but each time, you know, I think I've learned, I learned something new. You know, and I, I really appreciated the, the presentation and the discourse.
Yeah, absolutely, and if you have any, you know, questions that stem outside of the meeting, you know, feel free to contact, you know, myself or staff. Um, we're always there to answer any questions you have related to the planning process procedures, zoning, master plan, anything, uh. Played with county does, so.
Want to say also, a second word, uh, Commissioner Allen said, I've heard a number of these, I learn something new every time, it feels like. And, uh, I hope you keep them coming every, you know, every time you can, at least once a year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Sarah, um, I'd like to see if maybe we could, one time, maybe do a little short brief, I know Robert's rules have a lot. But I think that would be super educational for the ones that are new on the board, so they understand the process.
Absolutely, and we did include the, the open meeting law training video in the agenda as well as the manual. So it's there for your, for the new commission members to review, watch, um, I know it was part of the, the party packing. But it is within the agenda, if you need us to send it to separately, let us know, but that is, I, I believe. Um, there might be a meeting in the future related to help me, uh, that you're more willing to.
Well, for some of us, some of these slides are super easy and understandable for us, instead of reading that. Sometimes.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and I just, especially for the, anyone that's new, never been on a board. It, it's, this, like, this was super helpful, I think that would also be super.
Absolutely.
Technically Robert's rules that were.
Correct, it is. I think they, they might work in tandem, but what we reference.
Some, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item ten, Commissioner, comments and agenda requests, do we have any? I can start down it, I'll start at the left, my left. Wendy?
Wendy, I don't have any comments, but thank you, it was informative, and I appreciate all the, um, help from everybody, so thank you.
Mr. Jones? I don't have anything, but I'd like to welcome my two new members and also, uh, comment on the extensive, uh, knowledge Wendy has with tribal gaming. And I think that's a great addition to the board, because we don't have any of those who probably understand tribal gaming that much, and they do have a great impact on the community. So I welcome it very much.
Tribal, yeah, that's true.
Comments, thanks.
Andrew, I want to say thank you, um, to Gavin for that presentation, and, uh, it's very informative. Thank you. Commissioner Sarah.
I just want to say happy new year to everyone, and I look forward to working with you all in the future, and welcome to the new members. I just wanted to say welcome to all the new members, we enjoy, uh, I, I know we're all gonna get along amazingly most of the time.
I don't know what I could add to that, except also welcome and thank you, and a happy new year, that's a good point.
Uh, Simon, can I just mention something, I want to thank the, uh, border county commissioners that actually attend these meetings via Zoom. It's always great to see you guys listening in to what we're trying to accomplish, and it is very much appreciated.
Excellent point. Okay, are there any? We'll move on to our second public participation, no action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission. But not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic, and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda. As an item upon which action may be taken. Do we have any public comment? Okay. No, that's a cursor. Okay, seen none here and none online. I'll go ahead and see the meeting's adjourned, it's ten. Meeting's adjourned, and it's ten twelve AM.